Well, with that, we'll call the Senate to order. Hope you had a brief, I hope you had a great recess since last night at 1:00 and you had a chance to get home for a quick nap before breakfast. So with that, we, we did do roll call last night, but we, we, we thought the prayer from yesterday would carry over through last night, but we probably need another one today. Senator Hicks, we, we missed you on that, on the invocation yesterday morning. Are you, could you, can you adapt your invocation from yesterday to today and, and pick us up on that?
Mr. President, I don't see Senator Hicks yet.
Senator Anselmie Dalton, are you volunteering to pray for us this morning?
I was, roll call first usually, I was just curious.
You may not, it's been so long ago, you may not remember, we did roll call at about 12:00, 10, 12:00, 10 last night, or 12:00, 10. So all we did is recess, but we deferred invocation for today. So with that, if that's okay, if it's okay with the body, I'd be happy to offer the invocation this morning. Please bow your heads with me while we say this prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we come before thee this morning exhausted, but ready to go back to work for the people of Wyoming. We want to acknowledge thy hand in our lives, thy hand in helping to deliver us from this COVID epidemic. And ask for thy continued prayer and blessing to be upon the people of our country, of our state, of our communities, of our world. And continue to pray to deliver us from this pandemic and from the social and the economic and health and mental health effects that it has cast upon so many across our world. We are mindful of those who serve in the front lines, whether it be first responders or healthcare providers or others who are essential workers that keep our lights on and our houses either warm or cool, provide food in the grocery stores. And the other essential services that are out there, we acknowledge and appreciate these people, Heavenly Father. And ask that be with and bless them, bless all of their families, that they might be blessed, that they might be guided and directed. And what they can do to keep themselves safe and to keep everything going and balancing all the things that we have going in our lives at this time. We are mindful of our families that stay behind or do other things that enable us to come and serve the people of Wyoming in this part-time capacity. And ask that be with and bless them. We pray for those who lead us, whether they're at the state, local, or national levels, that they might be blessed and guided with wisdom, insight beyond their own, and do those things that are blessed, that will bless this, bless this country and state. They might make the decisions that are wise for us and not only help preserve our health, but our freedoms and liberties. We ask that thou would be with us this day as we come before thee for one more day to finish up the work that we've started. Yesterday, we asked that bless us with, with strength, with energy, with clear minds. We could do, continue to do the work for the people of Wyoming. We can have thy guidance, picking power to be with us. We ask for this prayer and for this blessing also to be with our staff, who also labored long and hard to try and make this a success and work behind the scenes to continue to help move this day forward. We ask these blessings and return these thanks in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen. Still need to do the Pledge of Allegiance once a day. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Curious to be with all the delays over Zoom, that, that probably sounds more like some conversation at Tower of Babel than it does the two edges of allegiance, but we appreciate you joining with us today in that.
You missed the president?
Yes, Senator, is that Senator Cole?
Yes, it is. I just, I need a little help from somebody. I'm only getting you, myself, Schuler, Baldwin, and Chief Clerk on one side of my screen. I'm not getting the rest of it.
If you, up in the right-hand corner, Senator Cole, is you have anything that says speaker view or, or grid view, or do you see a little thing with little dots on it? A little square with a bunch of dots on it?
No.
If you, if you want to, you can try and, I'll tell you what, if, Anthony, if you want to see if you can maybe help him. Senator Hicks is waiting in the waiting room. Get Senator Hicks to join us.
We have Senator Hicks now.
Here we are. Senator Hicks, welcome. Senator Wasserberger is with us now, too, I know. So Senator Wasserberger, welcome back. So Senator Cole. See if Senator Cole can get back.
I'm fine, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator Cole. So we have. Yes, go ahead.
The, Mr. Vice President wanted to let you know he's on his way up.
Oh, okay.
He, he's on now? Oh, no, I'm sorry. Senator Doc Stater just joined.
All right. I don't know, he didn't say where he's on his way up from, so we don't know how far that is, but anyway. We've got a couple of things we can do before we get down to the, the business of the day.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Need to, yes, Senator Bebaut?
Yeah, Mr. President, would this be an appropriate time to ask for privilege to the floor?
I'll tell you what, give me, give me, give me two, two minutes, just a couple of housekeeping items, and then we'll go to that if we could. Would that be all right, Senator Bebaut?
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. President. That'll work.
First of all, could we please have the Journal Committee report read in?
Mr. President, your Journal Committee reports that the Journal of Friday, May 15th, has been read and recommends that it be approved. Signed, Senator James Chairman.
Thank you. All those, and you've heard the, oh, thank you. Is that objectionary? The General Report has been adopted? Unless there are corrections. So now, next thing is message from the House, but before that, we'll do privileges to the floor. Senator Bebaut.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Senate. I've been doing this for a long time, and, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to, to compliment all of you, all 29 of you on the job we did yesterday, the level of debate, the sincerity, the concern for Wyoming, the concern for our constituency that we were elected to represent, and we are a citizen legislature, and we saw that to the 10th degree yesterday. And, and from Senator Scott with his 40-plus years, to the newly elected, to Senators Case, Co., and I that have, have a few years behind us. It was just a real, I was just proud to be with you yesterday and to be part of the, what we did. We worked long and hard, and at the end of the day, I looked around and saw the faces, and everybody was tired, but the, the intensity and the desire was still there. It's sort of interesting, Mr. President. You know, the House is more concerned about what the goofy senators are doing, which I, which kind of upsets me instead of doing their job and representing their constituency, but they're going to do what they're going to do. But I just wanted to share my thoughts with that. And, and at the late hour when I went to sleep last night or tried to, I couldn't help but think about the good work we're doing for Wyoming. So I wanted to thank you all, and, and we're not goofy, Mr. President. Thank you.
The later the date was, the goofier we got, but no, we're not, and we're not, we're not goofy in general, for sure. We're here. It's, we may smile, and sometimes our, our humor is gallows, but obviously, the time that we take away from our families, the time that we're down here, as many of you expressed in your, in your lives. I mean, we have in this, in our group of 30, a significant cross-section in the state of Wyoming, and as I look across the screen, there is, I don't know anybody that hasn't been seriously affected in their personal lives or the lives of their families by this, by this, by this epidemic and the economic effects and fallout from, from it. And so, let me know, I, I appreciate, I appreciate all of your efforts. And this has not been easy for any of us, and, and unfortunately, because of our jobs, there's still more to do. But well, today, we'll finish up with what we've got to do today. Any other privileges to the floor? Senator Boner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. On a different note, I'd just like to point that out that today is Armed Forces Day. And similar to yesterday, there's going to be a flyover of the State Capitol Building in the Cheyenne Regional Medical Center at noon, this time from the 37th helicopter squadron stationed at Warren Air Force Base. So if you have a chance here at the State Capitol, that could be a good opportunity to witness another flyover on our Armed Forces Day and just to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Well, Senators, thank you, Senator Boner. If we're still here, we'll be outside, though I, I expect we'll be here. Thank you for that. We'll make sure we do that. It's important to recognize and take a minute to celebrate the things we have to celebrate, and certainly the proud, the pride we have in our armed forces, in particular, our National Guard, and our National Guard, who are neighbors and citizens who serve in those dual capacities as our hometown heroes. We appreciate that. Thank you, Senator Boner. Any other privileges to the floor this morning? Thank you. We'll keep, we'll keep moving. So next thing we need to do, we have, we have messages from the House.
Messages from the House. Message number 100, third reading passed, amended. Mr. President, the bills listed below passed the House on third reading in an amendment form by the vote indicated. House Bill 1001, Emergency Appropriations COVID-19 Funds, 55 i, 3 noes, 2 excused. Message 101, House Bill 102, Emergency Government Action COVID-19, ayes 57, noes 2, 1 excused. Message number 102, third reading failed. The bill listed below failed to pass the House third reading by the vote indicated. House Bill 1003, Emergency Budgeting COVID-19, ayes 7, noes 52, excused 1. Their message number 103, third reading amendment, third reading passed, amended. House Bill 1004, COVID-19 Business Relief Programs, ayes 59, excused 1. Sincerely, Wendy Harding, House Chief Clerk.
Senator, Joint Rule 23-1, H. Roman at I, House Bill 1001, is referred directly to third reading.
Mr.?
Do we do all those at once? We do them one at a time, Madam Clerk?
Um, we actually have to read them in. It, it runs like a normal introduction.
Thank you. So House, House Bill 1001, third reading of the House Bill.
House Bill 1001, Emergency Appropriations COVID-19, Sponsored by Management Council. The vote was 55 i, 3 noes, 2 excused, passed, amended.
All right. So at this point, we, we go through and we explain the non-identical amendments. I believe that you should have found on your website this morning or emailed out, you should see some joint conference committee. Actually, some of, some, I think you, hopefully, we have some of those distributed, the joint conference committee summary reports that identify the differences. At this point in time, we will go ahead and open up that for the discussion of 1001. Senator Doc Stater, are you on the line? Do you have, I think, you have that for, the explanation for House Bill 1001?
Thank you, Mr.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes?
Let's, I would recommend that we repeat, or we do all the mirrored bills and then go to third reading, if that would be appropriate, and, and do the explanations in third.
That makes sense to me. I, I must have asked my question poorly, because that's what I thought I was trying to ask you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's not the first time I've had a bad, ask a bad question. So with that, let's do, let's go to House Bill 1002, third reading of the bill.
Mr. President, I believe we're on first reading.
Yeah. Oh, excuse me.
House Bill 1002, Emergency Government Action COVID-19, Sponsored by Management Council. Passed the House on third reading, amended, ayes 57, noes 2, 1 excused.
Senator, to Joint Rule 23-1, H. Roman at I, House Bill 1002, is referred directly to third reading. Let's go ahead and read in House Bill 1004.
House Bill 1004, COVID-19 Business Relief Programs, Sponsored by Management Council. Passed the House on third reading, amend, in an amended form, ayes 59, excused 1.
Thank you. And are there any other House bills? We've got 1001, then 1002, we've done 1004?
Correct.
There are, there are no other House bills that have passed. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. So let's go to House Bill 1001, third reading of the bill.
House Bill 1001, Emergency Appropriations COVID-19, Sponsored by Management Council.
Thank you. House Bill, I'll just call on Senator Doc Stater, Dex Metter. Doc Stater, do you have the explanation for the differences between House Bill 1001 and Senate File 1001?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, much of what we did here was very close. For exam, for example, the definition of the state entity, the capital construction, the definition of health facilities, grant funding for tribes, all that was identical. So I'll go to where we have just a few changes or a few differences, but not that much, actually. Page 5, line 18, I'll just go straight. We already know what, what we did in the Senate, so I'll go straight to what the House is working on from their side. Under, under that, they, they acknowledge the extraordinary circumstances of COVID-19 and how we have to distribute the CARES Act. We're very close there, and we just acknowledge the limitations imposed by the Wyoming Constitution. They do that. Actually, we do that, too. Very close, not a lot of difference. And then, technical corrections on page 9, line 8, those are simple, just referencing, representing workers' compensation, just technical corrections. And then, a little, little bit of difference on page 11, line 4, food production and processing. They include authorizing expenses to produce and process food incurred by businesses, cooperatives, and political subdivisions of the state that have suffered adverse market effects in COVID-19. And they added the words, if it affected the supply chain, which we didn't have. So if the supply chain is affected, that's included in their wording. That's a, that's probably an easy fix, but we'll see, we'll go into conference with it. The other one that, on, on page 11, line 13, authorizing funding for Wyoming businesses. Little bit of a difference, authorizing funding for costs experienced by Wyoming businesses that were directed to cease or limit business operations under the statewide order, and how, and it was all done in response to the public health emergency associated by COVID-19. Our wording is similar, theirs is a little different. Don't see a big problem in bringing that all together. Senate also was asked to have grant reporting done. This on, on House Bill 1, Senate File 1, not a lot of differences. I think we can come together, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the differences, or, excuse me, on House Bill 1001? Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none. Pursuant to Joint Rule 23J, House Bill 1001 is referred directly to a conference committee of three members from each House to meet and resolve the differences between the Houses with respect to both bills, Senate File 1001 and House Bill 1001. The Senate Committee for the, the Conference Committee for the Senate shall consist of the following. Senator Doc Stater, Chairman, Senators Wasserberger, and Guru. Just so you know, the, if you'll check in with our technical staff, they will set up, and all of your conference committees will be also done on Zoom, and then also, I believe, be livestreamed on YouTube. So thank you for that. Let's go to House.
Mr. President, just before we leave that, to Senator Bruce, Senator Wasserberger, we'll make sure you get the quick, quick notes, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I think these quick notes are, were these emailed to the, to members? Do you have those in emails, or are they on the website this morning? I'm getting a thumbs up from Senator Rothfuss and Senator Landon and others. So they are available for you to, to look and see, as well as anybody else who's out there. There are, I think they're available on the website. The, with respect, let's go to House Bill 1002, third reading of the bill.
House Bill 1002, Emergency Government Action COVID-19, An Act Relating to Emergency Aid and Emergency Procedures in Response to the COVID-19 Novel Coronavirus Pandemic. Passed the House, 25 for 1.
Thank you. For an explanation of the differences, I think, will, Mr. Vice President, are you ready to do that?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I am.
Please, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, we, we've got some pretty substantial differences on this, probably more than some of the others. Number one, and, and you guys can go to the website and pull these up. The actual cheat sheets are on the website now or on the front page. So the first one is our civil liability, and this is the big one. This is where we created new section. Wyoming S. 11139 provides immunity, civil liability, damages, and injuries. There is no mirror in the House on that, so that's going to be a, a fairly major point. Next difference one was the workers' comp definitions, premiums, rates. Add that the nature of employment presumed risk on COVID-19 employment sector covered by the Act. Deletes arose and replaces with, was filed, amends the dates, lines them up. That one, there's no mirror in the House on it. The third one was just a technical amendment that aligned those dates that we did to December 30th, December 31st. On the House side, they once again redid the definitions and the premiums and the rates, similar to we did. Presumed risk, same thing. Those are going to match off pretty well, the two of those. The next one was ours, was the temporary program for tenants and residents. We added $5 million into the program. They did one as well. Ours increases the amount of the program from 10,000 to 15,000, adds a new subsection B, Temporary Program, Rent, Security Deposit, Mortgage Payments, and Hazard Insurance. Theirs is 10 to 15, the same as ours, Temporary Program, same thing, Hazard Insurance, the entire deal. And then they deleted subsection B of it and inserted new paragraph, Authorized Program to Detect Monetary Systems. Benefit of the residence been provided to a mortgage holder or owner under the CARES Act award, meant to subsections. They, they track in fairly well on it. Also deletes references to a Montana program, which is, cleaned the thing up, and it narrows the income threshold to 250,000. So we're not a long ways on that. The next one is ours, Workers' Comp Premiums. We added a new subsection permitting workforce services to delay employees' payment to workers' comp premiums, including after the credit is applied. They did not do that. The next amendment we had allowed works to delay employees' payment of contributions to the Unemployment Compensation Program. Those are both ones we added that weren't there that we'll have to come up with. The last one is the Governor Blank Check Amendment that adds a new section to permit the governor to establish, and this is ours, temporary programs. If the program can't be supported with federal funds existing appropriations, includes a waiver of any fees charged by the state. The waiver of fees, probably not a big deal, but the other part just allows the governor to do whatever thing. That is all of the differences between the two. I would stand for any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on House Bill 1002? Any further discussion or questions on House Bill 1002?
Mr. President?
Senator Bebaut?
Yeah, Mr. President, the civil liability, of course, is a really important issue for the Senate. And, and the question I have for the Vice President, and, and in terms of, they, they had 105 over there as well as we did, but as I understand it, they did not even hear it. That's my first question. And the second question is, were there any amendments, and I, I could look them up, I guess, but I haven't. Any amendments to try to put that into this bill that failed in the, the House? Do we know that?
Mr. President, I don't have a clue what the House has done other than what's on the cheat sheet. I did not follow this bill much. I do know they didn't do anything at all with civil liability, and that's, that's going to be our big position where we take.
Mr. President?
Mr. President? Senator Anselmie Dalton?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the House side, there was a mirror of this bill, and it was pretty identical in language. It was promulgated by Representative Stiff, and I had some technical corrections on my amendment to it. In the House, it went to the floor, and it was called to Rules Committee, and there was, there's, I think, 13 in Rules Committee, and some were for it and some were against it, and it died in Rules Committee as not germane.
Mr. President? Thank you for that. Senator Baumfleter?
Where on parliamentary inquiry of Vice President or anybody that can answer this, where on the website is this cheat sheet?
Mr. President, if you just go and pull up the Wyoming Legislature, the sign-in page, and that's where I found it. I didn't go further in. But all three of the amendments are up on the first page that comes on. If you just do a web search, Wyoming Legislature.
The summary report?
Yeah, summary reports.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Senator Landon?
Mr. President, thank you. I believe we just received in our legislative email accounts about 10 or 15 minutes ago, these summaries as well.
Thank you. Senator, Senator Hutchings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to just say the same thing as Senator Landon.
And Mr. President?
Senator Case?
It came in an email from Ian Shaw.
Thank you, Senator Case. Yeah, well, even while we went home and napped, LSO continued to work, and so did our Chief Clerk. They were here long after we were, so. Thank them. We thank them for, you know, I, I walked around last, and last night, when was the last time many of them pulled in all night? Or some of them, but hadn't been, they'd been in college, but then I reminded them of the, at the end of the general session two years ago, and they said, oh, yeah. So any further discussion on House Bill 1002? Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, House 1002 pursuant to Joint Rule 23-1J, House Bill 1001 is referred directly to a conference committee of three members from each House to meet and resolve the differences between the Houses with respect to Senate.
Order? Sorry to interrupt, Mr. President.
Yes.
You said how, thank you, Mr. President. You said House Bill 1001 just now is referred to, and I, I know what you meant, but.
Thank you. Thank you. House Bill 1002, thank you for that catch, is referred directly to a conference committee of three members from each House to meet and resolve the differences between the Houses with respect to Senate File 1002 and House Bill 1002. The Conference Committee shall consist of the following. Senator Driscoll, Chairman, Senator Nethercot, and Senators Anselmie Dalton. House Bill 1004, third reading of the House Bill.
House Bill 1004, COVID-19 Business Relief Programs Sponsored by Minerals, An Act Relating to the Emergency Expenses of Government Related to Business Relief. Passed the House, ayes 59, what, excused 1.
Thank you. For an explanation of this, Senator Rothfuss and Senator Anderson, are you, are you, are the, are you all prepared to lead us through the differences on? to, uh, lead us through the differences on House Bill one thousand and four and Senate File one thousand and four? Senator, okay, so Senator, Senator, Senator Rothfuss, we'll start with you and Senator Anderson. Can you make, if he, if he, if he missteps, will you correct him, please?
Thank you, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me, Mr. President. Uh, there was one identical amendment that was presented in both chambers. That is the increase of the flat fee for the first program from fifteen thousand to twenty thousand. Uh, there are a series of non-identical that are not dramatically different. Uh, the first of those is the, well, actually, one of them is, which is this first one, uh, where on the Senate side, you'll recall, we established section seven, where the state loan and investment board would provide compensation for businesses through a new program. And then there was a third reading amendment, uh, related to that. Those are not, uh, mirrored in any way successfully in the House. So those are Senate only positions. Then we get to the loan to grants program. The next three amendments, uh, relate directly to that. So that began, in the House side, you have an amendment that is an identical amendment to, uh, the third reading amendment that we passed, uh, for the loan to grant program. We had the second reading amendment that you see, which is lined out because that was deleted by the third reading amendment. So what you effectively have, even though it's not showing as identical, uh, House two thousand and four A and two thousand and six A C, as those two stood, were identical, and then they become slightly non-identical because of our third reading amendments two and four, which were both adopted on the Senate side, where the first of those was our amendment to, uh, expand, uh, some of the program coverage within the Corona Relief stipend program. Uh, it was just a small amendment to language. And then the three thousand and four was that change where there was a removal of the number of businesses, uh, the requirement being less than a hundred for that loan to grant program. So it's actually very close. Uh, other than the, the, the one key difference is the new section seven, uh, in the Senate. Everything else is, is pretty darn close, Mr. President.
Thank you. Senator Anderson, anything to add?
No, that's a good summary. That section seven is the only thing I see that is quite a bit different than the House. The others, I think we can work those out, no problem.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any, is there any further discussion or questions with respect to Senate, House Bill one thousand and four and the differences between our respective positions? Any further discussion or questions? The, uh, there being no further discussion, House Bill one thousand and four, pursuant to joint rule twenty-three dash one J, House Bill one thousand and four is referred directly to a conference committee of three members from each house to resolve the differences between the houses with respect to both bills, Senate File one thousand and four and House Bill one thousand and four. The Senate Conference Committee shall consist of the following. Senator Anderson, Chairman, Senators Rothfuss, and Senators Bebaut. With that, uh, let me just, just, let's do, just checking of little housekeeping and procedure as we go. Anthony, are you still on the line?
I am, Mr. President.
Anthony Sarah, who is our, is a LSO staff member and, and has led us through the technical issues related to all of these things. Can you explain a little bit about the, uh, how we, how we're going to go into the, these Zoom conference committees? And so everybody will know a little bit and how to do that. And also, is, is there, what, what did the rest of us, are we going to check in every hour? Or how do you want the rest of us to proceed that are not involved in these conference committees?
Uh, Mr. President, so, um, here shortly, all of your JCC members will receive a Zoom invite, um, just like the one you used to join this meeting today. So those members will receive those Zoom invites. You can join those, um, Zoom, um, invites, um, just like you did, um, this meeting this morning. Um, so we'll stop the Senate stream, and those members will join that Zoom invite, and those will be, uh, streamed live to YouTube. Um, and then we will come back into session, um, when you, when you call us back.
All right. And then, so what we'll do for the rest of you, if, uh, I will set up, uh, I will set up, uh, what I'll do is I'll just send an email about every hour, try and do it every hour roughly on the hour, and let everybody else know who's, uh, out there, how this is progressing, and when we might come back together so that you don't, by not anticipating, anybody can attend the Zoom meetings by hitting the, uh, by finding the, this, the, uh, stream on YouTube. Uh, if there's out the other things to do and you want to be out and about at your homes, I will, I'll send an email about every hour, give you updates and so that you, at least you give you a heads up so that you'd know when you might be able to come back and, uh, and don't have, and not sit there all day unless you're just doing it to catch upon your sleep. So if that, this is another suggestion, I'd be happy to take that on. Senator Hicks?
Mr. President, is there any way that we could provide a text number and you could text that to us in case we don't have, uh, email capacity where we're at?
Fair enough. But we'll, if, is, if we did it that way, is there anybody that that would not work for if we just sent out this, a text update every hour? If anybody, that would not work, if that would not work for anybody, would you please sing out, just go ahead and speak up? Because like, Senator Scott? We'll give you a phone call.
Mr. Mr. President, uh, the email I would get, a text, we're not set up for.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, maybe, uh, we just, uh, I'd be happy to call Charlie, put him in on a conference. We just don't want him to miss out on any of this.
Fine. Charlie, would you like to, would you like to be involved, uh, uh, well, you're at, we have, you have email. If you, if you want to zoom in on a conference, just let us know. We'll, we'll get you, we'll get you an invitation to any conference you want to attend. Can't participate, but we'll let you, we'll let you in the room, I think. And, uh, uh, and, uh, would you rather have us call you or?
Enthusiasm for that.
Okay. Would you rather the call you or text you, Senator, or excuse me, call you or email you, Senator Scott?
Um, actually, uh, calling, uh, and I can give you, you want the number right now?
No, let's not give it to the whole world.
Okay, well.
So let's, uh, so, uh, I think I, are you, is it, is it the phone number you usually at, Charlie?
No, it's not my home number.
All right, all right. Uh, Charlie, I'll, I'll email in just a second. We'll change that information, exchange that information, okay? Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, so anybody that wants to, you kind of touched on this, but I just wanted to make it clear. Only those members of the JCC will receive the Zoom invite. Anyone else that wants to watch or monitor what's going on can do so from the Wyoming Legislature's YouTube pages. All three of them will be streamed out there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions or concerns or privileges of the floor before we, uh, before we recess to the sound of the gavel? Anyone? Senator Hicks?
Mr. President, I'm assuming we just give our text number to Anthony?
Yes, that'd be great. I'll, I'll find Anthony and, and get the, get that from him, or, or he will. We'll arrange for that to be done. I don't know who sent that text, maybe from me or maybe from somebody else, but we'll, we'll set that up.
I can help you with that, Mr. President, as well. Unless anyone's has any changes, I do believe I, I have that information for, for all of the senators. I, I would not have Senator Scott's, but I would be happy to help assist with that email.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Anything else from the members before we sign off for now? Senator Moniz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we, will we leave this meeting then and have to re-log in when we reconvene, or how will that work?
Anthony, can you help us with that?
Mr. President, no, you will still just continue. I will leave this Zoom meeting, um, running. So just like we did last night during the ninety-minute break, for example, we'll leave the Zoom meeting running. I am going to shut off the, the live YouTube stream on the website, though, so that we can use that channel for the JCCs. But this Zoom meeting, just leave it pulled up on your laptops, just like we did during the ninety-minute break last night.
Is that okay? Any other, any other comments or concerns, suggestions? Senator Steinmetz?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was wondering if we could get a text when those conference committee meetings will be happening just so in case we would like to tune in so we would know when they are.
I think those will be posted on the website here in just, just momentarily. Anthony, is there anything else that any, that any member would need to know in order to participate, or excuse me, not to participate, but to follow one of the, any of the conference committees?
No, that's correct. Um, just go to that homepage, Homeslatter, go to watch live. That'll take you to the Wyoming Legislature's YouTube page, and those, um, JCC meetings will be out there.
Does that, does that help Senator Steinmetz?
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could, uh, we may be driving home, and so if we could get it, or if at least I could get a text when those would be, I would sure appreciate it. Thank you.
I, Senator Doc State, did you have something? I, they'll, they'll be set up as soon as the, they'll, they'll get started as soon as the, uh, as soon as both sides can get together and, and get in their rooms. There's nothing else for us to do today, so I hope that they get started on them, and I'm sure they'll be.
I think we, that our, our Anthony puts us on that thing, and then we're just sitting there waiting for you guys, I guess.
Are you talking to? Needs to mute. Yeah, thank you. Is there anything else? Are we ready to, are we ready to leave the meeting? Anything else from anybody? All right, members, you know, y'all have my phone number. Anything comes up, you got any questions, please feel free to call me or call someone down here. Uh, we'll try and make this go as smooth as possible. We're all, we're all playing new ground with this, so thank you for your time. Thank you for your attention, and Godspeed to our joint conference committees.